I think every one of us is ready to go. So it's four o'clock, it's Tuesday, December the 4th, and I'll call this meeting to order. I do need a motion to adopt the agenda as it's stated. Paul's made the motion, I need a second. Chad's second, all in favor, seven zero. We also need a motion to go into closed session pursuant of North Carolina General Statute 143-138 to consult with our board attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to consult with the board attorney from confidential matters.
To add in to discuss personnel matters protected by 115(c)(321) at second, E.T.S.U.P.
To add that, as our board attorney has shared, what she said, yes, that would be great. Do I have a motion to go into close?
No move.
Chad's closed, second. Wendy, all in favor, seven zero. We are now into closed session. Thank you. We are reconvening our December the 4th meeting, and I have a special presentation. I'm going to deviate from the agenda just a second. I would like Joanne, Eddie, John, Mary, and Butch to come out front for just a second. The tech team. Thank you each for allowing us to do that. We do appreciate our technology team. At this time, we will have our invocation. If you will join me, please. As we gather this evening, I ask this board to be mindful of the business we are about to undertake. We are thankful for everyone in attendance this evening. Further, we are thankful for the opportunity to govern and the freedoms that we enjoy. We always pause to remember the students, faculty members, and families in our system who are facing challenges, illnesses, or even other challenges. Our positive thoughts are with this group of folks. As always, we seek wisdom to make the best decision for the students and the citizens of Davie County. Peace be with each of you. Thank you. At this time, I would like Brownie Troop, 2146, from Farmington Community Center, to come forward to lead us in the pledge. Thank you again, young ladies. You did a great job. Board, at this time, we have two sets of minutes. We have the work session business meeting of October 23rd, and we have the called special meeting of November the 15th. Do I have a motion to accept these amendments? Paul makes the motion to accept. Do I have a second? Chad's seconds. Any discussion, any additions? Seeing none, all in favor, seven zero. Now we'll move to our board report. Dr. Hartness. I'm having such a big time, I'm forgetting to do things. Thank you. The important dates coming up in December are, we had our iPad training, as I said, today, and also, we will begin with some special meetings, and that is tomorrow, December the 5th. We will be dropping in at the multipurpose room at Davie High, talking to the architects and having discussion with the Davie High staff. On the 7th is a busy day for us. At 7:30, Clint and Carol will be attending the Chamber Legislative Update. Paul and I, Dr. Hartness, will be attending a meeting in Greensboro, where South Davie will receive an award. On December the 10th, we have DARE graduation and a 4-6 drop-in for the board. Also, on the 11th, we have a DARE graduation at Moxville. 13th, a DARE graduation at Kool-A-Mee. And then we get more training for board docs. On the 14th, we will be touring Reagan High School, Watah- Waukertown High School, and the Career Center in Winston-Salem. On the 18th is the robotics competition at South Davie. And now a day that a lot of people will be waiting for, that's early release on the 21st, so happy holiday, kids. I know you're going to enjoy that, that day. And then our next board meeting will be January the 8th at 6:00. Also, on the 7th, that day, at 7:15, we are leaving to go visit Rocky River High School. So we are very busy for the next month and coming into January, and I thank everyone for being here, and please come back to the January meeting, we'd love to have you. Dr. Hartness.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have several things that I want to cover with staff and parents, I'm sure will be interested in some of these as well tonight, but I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving break, and I know students were on just a short list of days before we're out for Christmas, but a lot of productive things happening in our schools right now. I want to thank the board for coming early this afternoon to learn about using iPads as we conduct business, and we'll do some more training on the 13th. Thank our technology team again for putting that together. I appreciate this board being willing to model the use of technology for our staff and students. That means a lot to us, we appreciate that. Our last meeting in November was the first that we televised, and just as a reminder, board meetings now will be televised the week after our meetings on cable channel 25, if you have Yad Tel, and Tom Warner, channel 6, and those are Tuesdays and Saturdays at 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Again, another kudos to our technology team for making that possible, and I also want to thank Neil Smith, who is with the IT Department with the county of Davie, who have helped us make this possible for our community. Since our last meeting in November, our staff has been extremely busy working with our architects. We've had several meetings with staff. Today, there were meetings all day at Davie County High School, providing an opportunity for our staff to give feedback to the architectural firm for one comprehensive high school for our community, for all students and all programs, and it was pretty exciting to see some of our students coming through today and giving feedback as well, and seeing that process, and seeing what their teachers were involved in, and administrators. We'll be wrapping up tomorrow morning. The architects will be back there talking with staff, and I've invited the board to drop in between 11:00 and 1:00, and you'll be able to see the ideas that have been generated over the last day and a half by our staff and students. Our architects are going to use the feedback they've received today and tomorrow, and feedback from our administrative team, and work with our staff over the next month to come up with a, and present a schematic design for a comprehensive high school. We hope to finish that up by the end of January, as well as have cost estimates for that project, and our goal, board, is to bring that to you in a draft format February the 5th at our February board meeting. In addition to working on the schematic design for the high school, our architects are working with us to develop a repurposing plan for the existing high school campus and cost estimates for that repurposing. We've invited a group of over 25 people together on December the 19th to come together and discuss how we might use that existing high school campus for both the school district and for the community if we were able to build a new high school campus. So we're looking at all the possibilities there for use, using some of the newest buildings on campus, as well as the possibility of demoing some of the oldest and repurposing that property for community use. Again, that process will wrap up in January, and we hope to bring you some ideas and some cost estimates at our February the 5th meeting. Chairman Owens also mentioned that we're setting up several visits. On December the 14th, we'll be at Reagan High School, Waukertown High School, and the Career Center in Forsyth County. We'll be looking at those three projects that were designed and built by Walter Robbs Callahan Pierce, our architectural firm. We're traveling to Charlotte on January the 7th to take a look at Rocky River High School that was constructed and designed by Little Diversified. So we'll be looking at the design elements, the construction, building materials, and different methods that are used in modern high schools throughout those visits, and we'll try to incorporate and use some of those things in our planning with our current architectural firm. So this is moving pretty rapidly. I've been very pleased with the progress we're making so far with Walter Robbs, and Wesley and Clark have been a pleasure to work with. We've had several events over the past month, I know the board has been involved in, I've been involved in that I want to highlight. We had a number of Veterans Day events in November, and our schools did a fabulous job of honoring our veterans, and I just, hats off, Mr. Whitaker, I know that the things that we're doing throughout our school system, to honor the people that have put us in the position in America that we're in and fought for our freedoms are really special. Lunch at Cornatsor Elementary in November, the board came out for lunch there, and I think those visits are very valuable for you to be able to see what's going on during the school day, and life in a school cafeteria, too. So that was a nice visit, and Dr. Renner and her staff were hosting us there. We had a very well-attended Early College Open House in November. That school is really on the right track. We have a fine facility that we can proudly give tours of at the Early College. I'm just really proud that we're, what we're doing at the Early College. I mentioned to some of you, I had the pleasure of handing out medals to about 150 of our students who were part of the Go Far running program, and were part of the First Annual Turkey Derby 5K a few weeks ago on Saturday, and we actually had one of our school board members running, so go far, Mr. Junker. But it was really exciting to see all of our students out there, and I want to thank our teachers and our volunteers that worked with all of our students in the Go Far running programs. I know at Kool-A-Mee, and at Moxville, and at Shady Grove, and Ellis, they all have Go Far running clubs, and that's pretty exciting for them to be learning healthy habits at a very young age, and to see some students in their first 5K and running in a competitive mode, so pretty neat. I want to give you an update on some meetings that I was in last week. I was down in Raleigh for several days at the superintendent's quarterly meeting. In addition to getting some updates from our state superintendent and Department of Public Instruction, I had the pleasure of spending a little over an hour with Speaker of the House, Tom Tillis. He came and met with a group of superintendents on our executive board and talked about what he anticipated in this next legislative session as the legislators come back to Raleigh after Christmas. I'm encouraged that Speaker Tillis would sit down and listen to what some of our concerns were from school systems, and give us some ideas of some things that he is thinking about and the legislature's thinking about. He does, he indicated he did not see revenues getting worse, but he was hopeful that we would see some increase or revenue enhancements in this next session. He committed that the House of Representatives would be wrapping up their work by May 30th, and he said if not by May 30th, by May 35th. So their intentions are to wrap up the long session by the end of May, and that's good for public schools, because that means we can react and plan to the decisions that are made in Raleigh. The only way we can make our public schools better, and to shape law that will shape our public schools in the future, is if we have open dialogue and conversation like Speaker Tillis invited that night, and I was impressed and appreciative that he was setting a good example of open communication with the superintendents across the state, so I was very encouraged by the conversation. At our superintendent's quarterly, we met with the state superintendent and the Department of Public Instruction and talked about things that are affecting both our teachers and our students across the state. This is the first year of new curriculum, Common Core standards and the essential standards that our teachers have been preparing for. Where our high school students are hearing about measures of student learning, or MSLs, and Common Exams. Those are benchmark tests in courses and grade levels where there are not EOGs and EOC tests already. So we talked a lot about those, and the MSLs were designed to link student performance to teacher performance and teacher evaluations, and we said very strongly to our leadership in Raleigh that this is a new process, and we feel like we need to slow down just a minute, and let's look at how these new MSLs are working with our students, look at validity and reliability of those tests before we start linking those to our teacher evaluations. So I know that Race to the Top required us to populate some of our standards within the teacher evaluation, but our request as superintendents on behalf of our teachers and staff was let's slow down for just a minute, and let's take a look at how our students perform in this environment with these new tests and new curriculum, and let's make this a quality product at the end of the day. We also know that last year in the legislature, the legislature passed a law that would give every school in the state a grade, A through F. And while we're very supportive of making a accountability program that's transparent and easy to understand among the public, we have some concerns about how do you arrive at a single letter grade for an entire school when you look at all the measures that we have in place? So we're working together and hope to work together with the legislature to define how you operationalize a letter grade for a school, so that it is an accurate reflection for our public and our parents. So those are a few things that we talked about as well. There was a lot of discussion about some of the new law that was put in place right at the end of the budget cycle last year. One was performance pay. We hear a lot about performance pay for teachers, and, you know, treating teachers more like a performance pay that would be applied in the business world. And again, the superintendents are working together and trying to work with the legislature to look at how do we develop a model that is fair and equitable across the state? And the legislature finds themselves in a really interesting position, because they've been very publicly opposed to more tests for students, and I'm sure our students are opposed to a lot more tests and high-stakes tests for students. But to have a performance pay plan that's linked to student performance, you have to have tests. So my hope is, as we begin these conversations and have these conversations, as how we operationalize what has been passed in the legislature, we'll take the two extremes and come together and come, come together with a really good product that will reward teachers. The other piece to performance pay that we all know about is how do you pay for that? Because we removed ABC bonuses several years ago, so there's a lot of questions about that, and we'll just kind of have to see where that goes as the legislature reconvenes. We also anticipate that there will be some voucher bills in the legislature in the spring, and again, I'm not sure where the revenue would come for, using public money for private education, but we'll just have to see and follow that and see where we go with that. Also, our schools will anticipate, and teachers and staff will anticipate, some new tools available next school year. NCYS, you've heard about, that's our Student Information Management System. We'll also have a new instructional improvement system, and the combination of those two will be a new product that will be called Homebase. And Homebase will be a place where teachers and administrators can go and get student information and data about our students to help them along the way. So we'll be hearing more about Homebase in the next couple months. I say all that to say that there's one thing we can be sure of, change. And I will assure you, as our staff talk about these things that are coming to us from the federal government or from Raleigh, we want to make decisions that are in the best interest of students, and we will pledge to you that we, we will represent Davie County on behalf of our teachers and our students, and I'll do my best to keep you updated and informed as to what's coming our way, and how specifically those things will affect Davie County schools. Enough for legislative stuff. Last Friday, Bill Harrison, the chairman of the State Board of Education, came to Davie County. He visited with me and a couple of our board members at Kool-A-Mee Elementary School, at Davie Early College High School, and at Davie County High School. Thank Clint and Barbara for joining us on that tour. Dr. Harrison was very complimentary of our school system and extends his congratulations to each of you and our parents and students for a job well done here in Davie County. This Friday morning, we will have a celebration breakfast in Greensboro, and we will honor not only South Davie Middle School, but we'll have a chance for our vocal students at Davie High in the Madrigals class, as well as a quintet will be performing at this breakfast, and it will be a breakfast for principals and school board members and teachers and other folks from 15 school districts in the Piedmont Triad. So it'll be a chance for our school system to be the showcase performing group at that meeting on Friday morning. So we're pretty excited about that, and I want to say thank you to Ms. Snow and Mr. Jimmison for their hard work in preparing our students for that performance. The rest of December and January are extremely busy. We have a lot of holiday celebrations, we have a lot of things going on in the school system, we have three DARE graduations coming up. We continue to work on our facility issues, but we're also working on our draft of the strategic plan, so we're still continuing that and hope to bring you a draft pretty soon on that. We're wrapping up the process of redesigning our district logo and tagline. The one that you see here was developed 10 or 12 years ago, so we're working on that, and that will come together in January, and we hope to also have Mary Orr at the stand in February to show you a new website for our school district. So all these things are coming together at, at one time, and a lot of exciting things happening in Davie County schools. I'll be quiet for now, because we have some exciting recognitions tonight, and a lot of students and parents here, want to thank you for being here, and I wish each and every one of you a very safe and happy holiday season. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hartness. Stephanie, it's now for the staff and student recognitions, please.
I think I'm up first.
Board members, Dr. Hartness, members of the audience, we have several recognitions tonight, and it's wonderful to see such a large group, and a wonderful time to celebrate. At this time, Dr. Hartness has a special recognition for South Davie.
Thank you, Stephanie. Me again, on this side this time. I'd like for Keith Whitaker, Kim Stacy, and Miranda Jester to come up. Miranda Whitaker?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, Miranda didn't make it. Okay. Like I said, on Friday morning, we will be honoring South Davie Middle School as our signature school for Davie County, and each of the smaller districts in our region will honor one school, and the larger districts will honor two schools. And I want to share with you just a couple things about South Davie that makes them our signature school for 2012-13. South Davie Middle School met all of its annual measurable objectives, 25 out of 25, remarkable increase of 13.2% of proficiency in both math and reading in the past 12 months, resulting in 86.3% student proficiency rate. They received a recognition as school of distinction, making the third year that they've accomplished that level of performance. The primary strength of South Davie Middle is the consistently talented and dedicated teachers and its powerful sense of community. Using innovation and technology consistently, these teachers demonstrate on a daily basis how to foster a love of learning in their students with achievement scores steadily rising as a result. With close to 70% of South Davie Middle students relying on free and reduced lunch, strategic provisions are made for students who struggle academically, including 18-focused, carefully structured remediation settings for reading and math at least 30 minutes every day. Students are taking ownership for their learning and their citizenship as part of the South Davie community. For the past three years, student-led academic conferences with parents have been held quarterly. A model PBIS school, South Davie Middle School has been named the PBIS exemplar school for the last two years. Clubs are active and boost high participation, from student government to Math Counts, South Davie Student Boosters, Junior Civitans, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Beta Club, Art Club, Robotics Competition, Science for Tomorrow Club, and Culinary Arts Club. Although South Davie students may have limited resources on their own, it's heartwarming to see just how giving these students are, collecting over 5,000 cans of food for local charity, Storehouse for Jesus, raising $2,400 for Hope Groves, a mission in Sudan, and most recently, raising $3,000 for Big Brothers and Big Sisters to help struggling young people across our county. I will tell you that there are two fine administrators standing behind me, I'm extremely proud of them, and all of our staff at South Davie Middle, and helped me in joining, joined me in helping us to recognize South Davie Middle School as our signature school for 2012-13.
Next, we have Tom Evans, who will recognize the Maintenance Person of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say that choosing the Maintenance Person of the Year is a very hard job. We have a small maintenance department. We have a very skilled, very committed maintenance department, and I hope everyone here is aware of that. We're small, we do take care of most, all the school needs. Jeremy stood out this year because he's just a picture-perfect employee. He's punctual, he's committed, doesn't matter what the job is, he says, "Let's go do it." Just a great person to work with. Jeremy is a licensed electrician, went to Forsyth Tech, he's been with the school system for seven years, I believe it is. And basically, a wonderful part about Jeremy and his family is, with his parents and his wife's time in with the school system, they can count for well over 75 years of service to Davie County Schools. Jeremy, come forward, please.
Don Howard will recognize the Custodial Team of the Year.
I want to thank the board for recognizing the Custodial Team of the Year. It is, like Tom said, it is a hard decision figuring out which one it's going to be, because all of them's unique in their own way. Last year, this year, it's South Davie Middle School. They've overcome a few battles, and me and Keith Whitaker have overcome a few battles, but they've done a wonderful job, and I want to thank y'all for- they've done a wonderful job, and I want to thank y'all for recognizing them. I want to thank them right now and honor them. Have each one of them come up. It's Angie Dooley.
Woo!
Yay!
Carl's not here, is he? Carl Robinson's not here. Billy Greer.
Woo!
Carolyn Sloan.
this time, and I've asked our county athletic director, Mr. Barry Whitlock, to join me. And we've got some pretty special teams here, as you can well see, and we like it when we pack it out, and one of them back there waving at me, so Jacob's trying to distract me here. But we have two teams from North Davie, and we also have a team from South Davie. And of course, as you all know, that they did not just compete against each other as it's a conference that we're in, and so we shall say in at least three sports this year that we are by far the best in our conference. So at this time, we would like to recognize the North Davie Women's Tennis Team, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Whitlock, if he would, to share a few things about North Davie Tennis, and then we'll kind of orchestrate getting them to move through, and then we'll bring the next North Davie team up and so forth. So what do we have up front? Is this the tennis? Perfect. See, you're wonderful. Mr. Whitlock.
Ladies, y'all like to walk up here right now. Our ladies tennis team coached by Ms. Lauren Skidmore, her first-year coaching, they ended up the season with a 6-0 record and winning our conference. I'd like to congratulate all you ladies and Coach Skidmore for the job well done. At this time, North Davie volleyball, if you'd come up front. I think she's got almost her whole team. North Davie volleyball team is coached by Ms. Trish King, Assistant Brittany Stewart. They went a perfect 15-0, counting the conference tournament. In volleyball in middle school, you play the best two out of three games to win. North Davie, they did not have to go to a third game. They won every game they played. They did not lose a game. So congratulations.
We brought our whole team.
Head coach, Louise Deemer, assistant coach, Kathy Farby. South Davie Soccer Team won the regular season as well as the, and this Duncan Curl, one of the players, that won the regular season as well as the conference tournament, finishing a perfect 10-0. So congratulations to South Davie Soccer.
Glad to see you. Everything good? Must be good. Great job. Absolutely. Again, we'd like to congratulate all of our students and parents. I have two children in school, and so I understand. And girls, my daughter's on the other side of the net from that North Davie bunch, so I had to go home to a whole lot of talking about why they can hit so hard and why they're so good. It's okay. You keep working, and it'll get there. But they were an awesome team. All of them were awesome. And parents, I know what you put in, and it matters, I'm telling you. And they're great kids, and they're great students, and this is vital to our community. So I appreciate all your support, Coach Whitlock, coaches, administration. Thank you very much. Again, congratulations. Thank you for being here.
Okay, at this time, if you are a Holiday Card winner, I would like you to come up and stand up front, please. We have a special presentation, and... Okay, so our school winners were Millie Basinger, 4th grade, from Coolamee Elementary; Anna Marie Sloan, 4th grade, from Cananser Elementary; Sadie Isaac, 4th grade, Mottsville Elementary; Ashton Harris, 5th grade, Pine Brook Elementary; Casey Hodges, 5th grade, Shady Grove Elementary; Olivia Otto, 5th grade, from Wilmar Davie; Lily White, 6th grade, Central Davie Academy; Danielle Sanderson, 6th grade, South Davie Middle; Jordan Smith, 8th grade, William Ellis Middle; Erica Fowler, 9th grade, Central Davie Academy; and Erin Meng from the 11th grade at Davie High. Congratulations.
Okay, this was very difficult for all the people who voted, but we chose three of the cards to be featured on the school district Christmas card this year, and I have one of those, and it's hot off the press. I'm going to show it to you in just a few minutes, okay? So our three winners are, if you'd come forward for your $50 gift card for your artwork, Ashton Harris. Congratulations. Erin Meng from Davie High. And Danielle Sanderson. And this is the card. So this is the card that will go out to people in our community. This card will go out across the state to different people in other school districts as well. So your artwork has been published in a big way. We thank you all for your talents and sharing those with us, and you'll get a copy of this card as well. Don't forget, parents and students, to pick up your artwork that's been framed, that's on the table here tonight. Let's give all of our Holiday Art winners a big round of applause. Ready to go? Enjoy your gift card. Congratulations. Enjoy your gift card.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Y'all have a good Christmas. Board, we had lots of very nice recognitions, and there's one more that's not on your agenda that I'm going to do right quick, and this person doesn't know they're going to be recognized, but I'm going to ask Butch Rooney to come forward. Butch, I stole something out of your office that I wanted to share with the board, and that's a certificate of completion for a program that Butch just finished. I'm really proud of Butch. I want to congratulate him for completing the Certified Educational Chief Technology Officers Program through the UNC School of Government. The NC Certified Education Chief Technology Officer Certification Program is a dynamic program that features two components, one for superintendents and one for technology directors. The course covers 10 months, and it covers topics like strategic technology planning, communications, project management, emerging trends, risk assessment and management, acquisition of technology management, change management, leadership, security, legal issues, and financial trends, all in the field of technology, instructional and administrative technology. Again, it's a 10-month course, and Butch has spent a lot of time. I know it's been a worthwhile experience for him. He's met a lot of colleagues across the state. I'm sure he's learned a few things, but probably the people that he's been with have benefited the most by his expertise and his experience in technology. But Butch, I want to congratulate you for your leadership and your completion of this program, and now you can take that blue border and put it back in your office. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
That's great. Wow, that's a major accomplishment, Butch. Major, major. And we really enjoyed all the children tonight. They are starting off with the brownies. It's just been a great night, and this may be a record-setting shortest board meeting in the history of Davie County Schools. It's time to move to our consent agenda. We have two things on the consent agenda, and I need to add one more under personnel. In the addition is to amend our consent agenda item for personnel recommendation to extend Dr. Hartness's contract to June 30th, 2016. Do I have a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda items?
Send it.
Carol's first. I'll have a second. Wendy's second. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda items, raise your hand. 7-0. It has approved. Next is a public address to the board. Arti, do we have anyone signed up?
No, Madam Chairwoman, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Committee and staff report. Jeff, you're up.
Board, if you'll take a look in your packet there, and I hope you've had the opportunity to look over the calendar that we have presented for information, and Dr. Hartness and I were talking today, and we decided, I thought it was a wonderful idea, just to give you kind of a summary of the challenges with putting together a school calendar. Matter of fact, there's still someone in the audience that often grabs me and asks me questions, and I'm not going to point this person out, but why this, why that, why this? I say, "Why don't you just join us on this committee?" And this person was wonderful enough to do that. And so she's very kind, but I'm sure there were some things learned in that meeting, just like when I...